And that brings us right back to you, John. The next item on our agenda is, in fact, the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at this time, we will begin the public hearing for the board to consider the adoption of various amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, including a zoning map amendment and a rezoning of property in the historic character area. This matter is the only public hearing that we have on the agenda for today. We will begin the public hearing, receiving the staff's analysis presented by the planning director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I wish I could just let Mr. Lighty's intro be enough. And so I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible. It's a lot of information, as you can see by the download up here on the screen, but I'll go ahead and start out by saying that I'm here to present a series of text amendments to the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, and a map amendment, which most people would call a rezoning. So this effort began following the adoption of a moratorium on October 19th, 2022, by this board. The moratorium prohibited all non-residential development located within the C2 general commercial district in the area from Danube Street north to Hollowell Street in between the highways, so in between NC 12 and 158. It was at that time that planning staff and the planning board began working together to draft proposed regulations that would ensure the town's vision is maintained and the future development within the historic character area preserves and complements the area. The historic character area and the guiding principles for this effort really came from the town's comprehensive land use plan. It's a very large document. We had a lot of community input during the process of adopting the comprehensive plan, and that was done in 2017. If anyone's unfamiliar with the document or curious about the document, I'm happy to get it to you. You can also just go to the town's website, and I think at this point, it's right there on the front page. So if you're interested, you can certainly find it that way. Planning staff worked with the planning board on this item over the course of three of their regularly scheduled meetings. November, their November meeting, November 2022, December 2022, and then in January of 2023. At their first meeting, there was a focus on understanding the existing zoning regulations, reviewing the intent of the historic character area and the neighborhood's character area in light of the existing land uses that were already there. At their second meeting, which was in December of 2022, the planning board received feedback from interested property owners from within the historic Cottage Row area, as well as the Old Nax Head Place subdivision. In both of these scenarios, the property owners expressed interest in that we give consideration to residential zoning designations. At this meeting, the planning board also began looking at potential map amendments based upon the existing zoning districts that we had available to us. In doing that, both staff and the planning board realized that really the districts that were available, the commercial districts, the C1, C2, C3, C4, and CR, that none of those really captured the intent of the historic character area. And so staff went back to the drawing board and created a new zoning district, which we're calling the C5, Commercial 5 Historic Character Commercial District. It was at their January meeting, the staff presented the draft ordinance amendments for the establishment of the C5 district and the associated map amendment, which I'm assuming most of you are familiar with. So at this time, I would like to walk you through the amendments, and as I said before, I apologize, it's cumbersome. I'll try to be concise and not go down many rabbit holes with it. So let me first blow this up so that it's legible. I hope that the mouse cooperates with me. So here's the draft of the proposed text amendments. This is just our initial page here, where we set out the purpose and authority. This is also the area where we discuss the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the policies that guided this discussion concerning the rezoning effort and the text amendment effort. So first up, we have an amendment to Section 6.2.2. This is just a very straightforward chart, and we're just adding the C5, as you can see right here. And the mouse doesn't care for me anymore. All right, so next up is going to be Section 6.2.4, Commercial Districts, to include the C5, the Historic Character Commercial District. This is where we've created the intent narrative. You can see that. It's at the bottom of the paragraph there. It states the historic character of commercial, the C5, is established to accommodate neighborhood scale commercial and residential development patterns that are compatible with and protect the surrounding residential areas, including historic Cottage Row. Then down below that, we sort of expand upon what that looks like. The next amendment that we have up is to Section 6.6. This is our table of uses and activities. This is a large document in and of itself. Looking at the screen now, you can see the chart, how it's set up, and you can see where we've added the C5 district. And we did that in red, underlined, highlight, yellow, so you can just kind of use this as a matrix to see which uses are being proposed to be allowed within the C5 district and how they're proposed to be permitted. So when you see a P, that means that it's a permitted use, and it's permitted by right. It's something that, if you proposed, we could issue that permit in-house. If you see an S beside it, it means that it's permitted, but by the special use process, which is a longer process. It's a quasi-judicial process that many of you may be familiar with. It's where the request is going to go to the planning board one month. They're going to make their recommendation, and they're going to set a public hearing, and then it will come to the Board of Commissioners. And then if you see an R with either the P or the S, it just means that there's supplemental regulations associated with it, and you can go to the UDO and check that section, and you'll see what those regulations actually are. I won't go through this entire document. I hope that everyone has had a chance to look at it. I'll say right now, from the staff perspective, this was a very large undertaking, and I recognize that what's here today isn't perfect. And, you know, there very well could be uses that we need to add, to remove, to amend, et cetera. So, but hopefully, this is a good base that we can start with. The next section that we amended was Section 8.2, Development Standards. I apologize, Karen, it might take a while. But this is the development standards within our primary districts, and it's to establish the dimensional requirements for the proposed C5 district. You'll see, oh, here we go. Just maybe scroll down just a tad. There should be some red. Actually, just go down a little bit more. Almost. There we go. Perfect. So here's where we're setting out the dimensional requirements for the C5. You look at the lot area, that's consistent with the C2 district, which I will say that the entire rezoning area from Danube to Hollowell, between the highways, that's currently zoned C2. So the dimensional standards for lot area are the same as what's currently in the C2, as is lot width at 50 feet, the same with our front yard setbacks of 30 feet for residential, eight feet side yard setbacks for residential. That's going to be 15 feet for commercial. You'll see a little footnote there that goes into more detail, which I don't have to do right now. And then the rear yard setback, which is 25 feet or 20% of the lot depth, but in no case should exceed 30. Our height is the same throughout the town, 35 feet. You can go to 42 if you have an 812 roof pitch on your structure. That last item is different. What's proposed right now, it says 40% lot coverage is permitted. You'll see the footnote there, which if you go down and look at that in more detail, which we will, that speaks to an allowance to increase that 40% with the use of permeable paving materials. So we'll get there, but essentially, it just says that lot area is going to be 40% or lot coverage, rather, is going to be 40% of your lot area, and you can increase it to 50% if you use a permeable paving material. So moving on, the next section is going to be Section 7.15. There we go, pet shops. This seems random, just sitting right there in the middle, but when you talk about whether these uses had a P for permitted or an S for a special use, when staff in the planning board was looking at this, and we saw pet shop, and it was a permitted use in the C2, but it included pet shop, like the large retail pet shop that you would imagine, like a PetSmart, that's maybe going to have a vet clinic inside it, and grooming as well. So we wanted to amend that to say that we are recommending pet shops be allowed within the C5, but only grooming. So if you could imagine just a standalone shop, or maybe a shop within an existing shopping center, that's for pet grooming only, but no boarding. So moving on down from there, we're at Section 8.3, Special Development Standards, and this is where a lot of the information relating to the C5 can be found. So it's where the requirements that are below are in conflict with the requirements of the UDO and other sections, and this section will supersede. So what you'll notice is, we're proposing that new commercial structures that are fronting NC 12 not exceed 3,500 square feet of habitable building area. Just below that, we're proposing that commercial structures on lots that are fronting US 158 shall not exceed 10,000 square feet of habitable building area. Then below that, we're noting that we do have some lots that have frontage on both 12 and 158, and if that commercial structure is closer than 75 feet to NC 12, they're going to fall under that 3,500 square foot rule. But if the structure's farther than 75 feet away from NC 12, they're going to fall under that 10,000 square foot rule. And next up, in addition, they have in addition to achieving compliance with commercial design standards of the UDO, the Board of Commissioners must also make a finding that the proposed building design reflects the heritage of Old Nax Head and does not diminish the unique architectural character of the Nax Head Beach Cottage Row Historic District and surrounding properties. Lastly, all new construction, any increase in building area, customer service area, lot coverage, addition of outdoor storage, customer waiting, or a change of use of any commercial structure within the C5 must be approved via the special use permit site plan review process. I'll note that this is one of the pieces of the proposal that is more stringent than with any other district in the town, and so there might want to be some discussion on that section as we move through this. Next up, we're going to have Section 8.6.6.4. This is just, we actually already talked about it, but this is just where we spell out that, if you scroll down just a little bit, that within the C5 Historic Character Commercial Zoning District, lot coverage shall not exceed 40% of the lot area, and it may be increased to 50 with the use of permeable paving. So we already touched on that, but that's what it looks like in ordinance form. Next up, we're going to have Section 10.8.2. This is pretty straightforward. This is just a section in our code where we were talking about commercial design standards, what it didn't apply to and where it did apply, and so we just wanted to make sure that the C5 was added to the list of commercial zoning districts. Beyond that, we have Sections 10.24, Section 7.78, 7.45, and 7.23, that are essentially just areas within the code as it pertains to the height of walls and fences. What else is in there? I think there's a section in there related to distances. There's some distance requirements. If there's a consideration of having a sexually oriented business within the town, it has to meet some parameters, and so we needed to include the C5 in that. So there we go. We can scroll down just a little bit there. And then next up is, we wanted to include the C5 in the definition section for commercial transition protective yard. And this is an increased buffer yard, where you've got a high intensity use adjacent to a residential district, or it can even be a commercial district, but a parcel that's been developed residentially. So we just wanted to make sure that where that occurred, we had at least noted that that buffer yard did apply to the C5 as well. Let's see if I can, if you'll just scroll. Still not happy with me. The next part of what you'll see is not actually amendments that are within our Unified Development Ordinance. It's not within the land use portion of the code, just within the general town code. And here again, we just wanted to include the C5 where we needed to. Section 12.13, the licensing of sexually oriented businesses. If you'll scroll down, we just wanted to add C5 to that. Also, where we talk about maximum noise levels permitted by zoning district, we wanted to make sure that the C5 was also listed, where we talk about commercial uses and what that decibel level is going to be. I think that wraps up those, the actual text amendment piece. So next up, I want to say, is where we move into the actual rezoning or the map amendment. So if you'll scroll down, Karen, I think pretty soon, there's going to be a map that pops up. So this first image on the map, that's the area of the proposed map amendment. It's what we've been discussing, Danube to Hollowell, between the highways. It's the existing zoning, which you'll see is C2 entirely, and we've marked some of the commercial businesses to kind of acclimate you to where everything is. And if you scroll down just a little bit, this is the proposed map amendment. So this is what the planning board discussed at their January meeting. This is what we received the recommendation on, and this is what we have obviously moved forward for the board's consideration today. The C5, which I've been talking a lot about, that's the sort of the light blue area. I don't think, this doesn't show up on TV, so I apologize, but I don't think my cursor's going to bear with me, but this white-blue area, that's the proposed C5 district, that's the proposed commercial district that we're talking about. This yellow, patches of yellow, that's the R3, the High Density Residential Zoning District. The R3 previously existed within our code, so there were no changes that needed to be made there. In the R3 district, your lot size, your minimum lot size is going to be 15,000 square feet. Your side yard setbacks are going to be eight feet for residential, and your minimum lot area is, no, your minimum lot area is 15,000, your minimum lot width is going to be 50. So in addition to just looking at the existing land development patterns and saying, okay, we, you know, we kind of have a grouping of commercial in this area, and we have groupings of residential in this area, you'll notice there's some vacant properties as well in here, and when you look at those properties, they're all about 50 feet in width, and they're all about 15,000 square feet. Not all of them, but some of them, the majority of them. So it made sense to propose the R3 there, because if you were to make, if we were to propose R2, the lot area might become non-conforming, because in the R2, the minimum lot area is 20,000 square feet, and a minimum lot width of 60. So, and then it just goes on up from there. For R1, the lot area is greater, the lot width is greater. So based upon the existing lot size, the existing lot area here, that's why we chose to go with the R3. So again, there's a little, there's another pocket of commercial here, and then if we can move the map over a little bit so we can see further north. It's perfect. Here's some additional proposed C5 areas, some commercial areas, and then you'll notice here, this light yellow color, that's going to be the proposed R3 district, and then you'll see that it goes a little beyond that, even north, and we have this inset map here that shows the area on the east side of Memorial, that's Old Nax Head Place subdivision. These properties, this property's currently zoned C2. The properties here that are already developed residentially, those have already been developed to the R3 standards that I just spoke about. This area here of Old Nax Head Place, that's zoned C2, but it's developed residentially, and it was developed to the R3 standards. Same here, as you move further north up to Bainbridge. So that area, even though it's been zoned C2, it's all been developed to the R3 standards commercially. So that's, that was the recommendation for the proposal here with the R3 zoning district. I'm sure there's a lot of questions about the map. We can zoom in and out of this, hopefully, for any site-specific questions, but that's where we're at in terms of what has been proposed with regard to both the UDO text amendments, as well as the map amendments. I'll say that part of a map amendment, there's some notice requirements, has to be in your local paper two consecutive weeks, it has to be advertised. Property owners within the area of the rezoning, as well as adjacent property owners, are to be sent a letter to the address that's shown on the Dare County tax records, and that was done. And I know we were talking about maybe littering of signs, and I'm sure everybody loved my littered yellow public hearing signs that have been out there for a couple of weeks. So hopefully, people that were interested in this had an opportunity to see those signs, receive their letter, see it in the paper, see the numerous articles that have been done on it over the course of time. So I believe that's it for me. It's a lot of information. I'm happy to go back if there's specific questions that anyone has.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Yeah, I think I need to start down here. So Commissioner Sanders.
All right. There's a lot of information, and I do see a lot of business owners in here. Do we have a number of how many businesses this might make non-conforming in the C5?
Sure. So within the C5 zoning designation, there are two uses that are not proposed to be allowed within the C5 that are currently within this area, and that is shopping center slash group development, and we do have two of those in this area. One is going to be Jockeys Ridge Crossing, the other is going to be Surfside Plaza. The other use that is currently within this area but was not proposed to be permitted in the C5 is automobile fueling stations. So we have the 711 at Cong Street and the Duck Through at Deering, I believe. Is that, I think it's Deering. So those are the four uses that would create a use non-conformity. I will go ahead and jump in and say that since we drafted this to today, even staff has noticed some tweaks and revisions that would be helpful to have, and I can discuss those later on if it's appropriate to do so, but as is, it's those two uses, and there's four properties that it would affect.
That would be my next question, I guess, as a business owner, is, I guess, one of the tweaks would be to put some protection in there for these businesses in case, like, one of them burnt to the ground and...
It is, and we have drafted this up just in a Word document that maybe Karen can pull up for us, and scroll down just a little bit. I think it's the very last item. There we go. So Section 5.6.1 of the UDO is the section that speaks to non-conforming uses. So I'll say that we have non-conforming structures, we have non-conforming sites, we have all degrees of non-conformities, and for a non-conforming structure, so say that your use is fine, but your structure encroaches into a setback, or it's too high, or something like that, we actually have language in there that says, if your non-conforming structure is destroyed or removed for any purpose, that it can be put back in the same footprint with the same degree of non-conformities that it had before it went away. And so as staff were like, we probably need something like that for non-conforming use as well. So this is what we've drafted for non-conforming use. The black wording is the existing terminology. You can see where we're striking through some items and adding new items in the red underline, but essentially, if the board were to consider it, it would read, "No existing structure devoted to a use not permitted by the UDO in the district in which it's located." devoted to a use not permitted by the UDO in the district in which it's located shall be enlarged or structurally altered in a way that increases the degree of nonconformity." Period. And then, "A structure, whether it's conforming or not, setbacks occupied by a non-conforming principal use, destroyed or otherwise modified by any means, may be repaired, maintained, or replaced with an identical or similar structure and identical use regardless of value provided the repair, maintenance, or replacement does not create new structural or use nonconformities, or increase the degree of the structural or use nonconformities." So, that means, take those four businesses that I noted, if anything were to happen to those businesses, whether it was destroyed by fire, storm, or whether the property owner just wanted to rebuild it, they could do that to the exact same degree that it existed prior. And of course, there's an opportunity to make it better or architecturally compliant, but, but it can be, but it would be able to be rebuilt. So, then below that, we wanted to note, the same goes for site improvements, like parking, landscaping, stormwater management, stormwater management measures. Those located on a property that contains a non-conforming use, those site improvements can be maintained, and they can be expanded to the extent that it meets the current standards. So, trying to think about, you know, parking, if a, if there's an existing business that's made non-conforming by this amendment, and they want to add additional parking, and they have the lot coverage and the lot area and the setbacks to do it, this would not preclude them from doing it.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work, too. That's all I have at this time.
Mr. Brinkley.
I appreciate you starting with the amendments, and starting at the bottom, but I'd be curious if it's okay with the mayor that we can go ahead and see the other amendments that you may be proposing to be made, if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. And I apologize, this is kind of a think-it-through for me and what may come up and how we're going to address it. But the first bullet point I had there was adoption of the map amendments, the C5 and the R3. Is that something you want to consider as presented? Are there revisions that you would like to see? And if so, we'll take note of that. The second bullet point that I had there, lot coverage requirements for the C5, as I said, it's different than it is in the C2. So, in the, in the C2, you're allowed to have 55% lot coverage. And in the proposed C5, it's that 40, plus bumping it up to 50 with permeable materials. And if, I will say, that is an opportunity for nonconformities right there, just by the adoption of the C5 as is. That could make a business non-conforming with regard to their lot coverage. And there's some allowances within the code that we could work with, but just to make it in alignment with the C2, we could switch it out for the language that's up there now. Lot coverage shall not exceed 45% of the lot area, and it may be bumped to 55 with the use of permeable paving. So, we're still keeping that incentive, or that desire to have some permeable materials, but we're allowing it to, in total, be the same, 55 and 55. So, C5 district, as staff, and I'm sure as planning board, going through that table in Section 6.6, with so many uses, it, it's hard to capture everything, and I certainly recognize that I missed things. I know at the planning board level, planning board members were, why is this not in there? Why is that not in there? And I was like, oh, it should be. I missed that, my bad. So, there, there could always be other items. One that I noted would be, the board may wish to put shopping centers back in as an allowable use within the C5. Shopping centers are currently a special use permit. Would recommend that it stay that way. Same for group development. I'll note, group development is a group of buildings on a single site occupied and used for offices, retail, personal service, indoor recreation, restaurants. So, I feel like group development captures Surfside Plaza, probably more so than shopping center, because it's multiple buildings on one property. Jockeys Ridge Crossing, Kitty Hawk Heights area, it's got the large building and then the, the other building on there, so it probably falls within group development or a shopping center. Mixed-use development, that's a single building containing more than one type of land use, and it's a combination of uses, but it's always going to have a residential component to it. And then lastly, commercial with accessory residential. And I'll acknowledge an error with my staff report, if you've looked in here. So, commercial with accessory residential, when I think about this, I think about Nag's Head Cafe. So, it's on NC-12, so with the new regs, it would be limited to 3,500 square feet of habitable area. You look at the tax card, and it's a little bit, it's almost, it's right at 4,000, I believe. But it's got an accessory residential component to it. So, that actually takes the restaurant down into conformity with the 3,500, when we acknowledge that there's accessory residential included into it. So, personally, I, as staff, I acknowledge, commercial with accessory residential does need to be added back into that list. And then just others, over the course of conversation, if there's other uses that people are interested in, we can add it, lift it in Word, so we can, I thought I might be able to do it, but Karen will probably have to help me. And if you'll scroll back up just a little bit, Karen. So, it's that bullet point right there. It's a very quick one, but it has a lot of impact. So, like I said, currently, all the uses proposed within the C5 would be considered under the special use permit. So, change of use, an addition, a revision to your plan. Any of those items, expansion of lot coverage, expansion of customer service, it's all going to be considered via the special use process. It's about a three-month process at best. And so, perhaps not all of the uses in the C5 should be special use. Perhaps there's certain uses that you think could just be permitted uses. It's something that we could handle as a staff administratively. And so, what I'd propose there is, is basically just to mimic the permitting of the use in the C5 with how it would be in the C2. So, if a use would be a special use in the C2, it would also be a special use in the C5. But if a use would be permitted in the C2, it would also be permitted by right in the Scroll down a little bit, and, and here's what we just talked about. So, there's certainly more items, more bullet points that we can add to this if we need to, but those were the things that came to mind that we may want to have more conversation on today.
I appreciate the amendments that you have proposed. The special use permit is special to me, because I don't believe business owners should have to go through that three-month process of jumping through hoops and time, money, and effort. So, I appreciate that. Looking at the other amendments, you've also decreased some of the nonconformities by adding some stuff back in.
Yes.
Which I, I think is, is needed to further protect these businesses that are affected. But I do appreciate your time, and also providing us with the amendments that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm probably going to have a lot of questions at the end before we, you know, either move to adoption or direct this back to staff for changes. So, I'm only going to ask one question at this point, and then one observation. In the Section 8.3, Special Development Standards, 8.3.22, reads, "In addition to achieving compliance with the commercial design standards." And the commercial design standards are pretty well-known. Everybody uses them. They were designed to make things look like Old Nag's Head: steep roofs, wraparound porches, dormers, limited window area, et cetera, et cetera. We already have those standards on the books. This says, however, "In addition to that, the Board of Commissioners must also make a finding that the proposed building design reflects the heritage of Old Nag's Head and does not diminish the unique architectural character of the cottage row." What does that mean? If you were trying to make a recommendation to the board and said, "This meets the architectural standards, but it also does or does not meet the standard of reflecting the heritage of Old Nag's Head," what would you be looking for?
Well, I understand your question. There is, I guess, ambiguity there. The reason this was added, and this might not be a likable thing for me to say, but our commercial design standards are twofold. The first portion of that is, you have an option to acquire 150 architectural design points through our architectural design manual. And if anybody's looked at that or familiar with that, as the mayor stated, it, you know, it says things like, if you provide an 812 roof pitch on your structure, that's 25 points. And if you provide cedar shake siding, that's 25 points, and a gable bracket is five points, and a porch is based on the perimeter of the porch, and things like that. You can get to that 150. And again, this may not be a likable thing to say, but in the time I've been here, we've had structures that met the 150, but did not have the Old Nag's Head style. It might have, yes, on paper, had the elements to get the number of points, but visually, it, it didn't reflect Old Nag's Head style. And then there's a separate set with the adoption of the UDO of commercial design standards, which is probably a little bit better than just the blanket 150, but there's probably still potential there to meet those and still come out with a product that isn't reflective of Old Nag's Head style. So, you know, I've noted, maybe there's opportunities to clarify the language, tighten it up, change it completely, you know, whatever's recommended by this board, but that was the intent of that.
So, potentially, we could codify that rather than, rather than leave it to, to judgment.
Could I note something real quick on that?
Sure.
So, originally, all these uses were proposed to be special uses. So, for the uses that, if the board decides to not make all the uses special uses, we would need to take that out, because that's a finding that would be made for a conditional use permit. So, obviously, if it's not a special use, the board can't make findings for the approval.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My other observation is, you know, whether the percentages are 40% with 50% to, if you use permeable paving, or 45 and 55, I'd asked a question if, if this change was about drainage, and the answer was that it was about development intensity on the site, attempting to reduce that by going from 55 to 40. If we make it 40 to 50 with permeable paving, or 45 to 55, I know what developers are going to do. They're going to go to the maximum, and they're going to use the permeable paving to get there. So, we haven't changed the intensity on the site, we've just made it more expensive to get to the 50 or the 55%. So, that's my observation about that.
Mayor Kahoon?
Mayor? Mayor?
Excuse me?
Excuse me. I will pray. I will pray. Congratulations.
You can keep your seat, Mayor. There's your chuckle of the day. Most of my questions have been asked already. I will have quite a number of comments at the end. I'm looking forward to hearing the public comments as well, which would be what I would base some of my comments on.
All right.
So, I'll reserve my time for the end.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Real quick, Kelly, in lieu of the mayor's comments, you mentioned neighborhood scale, and how does that really vary differently than the C2 based on anything other than the lot coverage requirements?
So, the first thing that comes to mind here is, in the, in the C2 district, a commercial structure can be 20,000 square feet in area. It's maxed at 20,000 square feet. In the proposed C5, it's going to be maxed at 10,000 square feet for those lots adjacent to 158. For, and the same goes for properties on NC-12. You know, on, on NC-12 now, there's a limitation of, I believe it's 10,000, and this is going to take it to 3,500. So, the, the size of your building is going to be different. There could be lot coverage implications that are different between the C5 and the C2 as well. So, those, and the uses, to be honest with you, there's, the, the proposed set of uses within the C5 is, is condensed from those uses that are allowed in the C2.
Let's hope, Mayor. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. One other observation or question, if I may, before we go to the public comment. Commissioner Sanders asked about the nonconformities. You referenced fueling stations and the two nonconformities. I want to clarify, those would be nonconforming uses, they would have two strikes against them. One, they are fueling facilities. Second, they are convenience stores. So, if we don't, if we leave convenience stores out of the ordinance, even if they did away with their pumps and canopies, they would still be nonconforming uses?
Correct.
Okay.
And maybe we add convenience store to that Word document that we just had up there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. If that's it from the commissioners for now, then, Mr. Leidy, we will proceed with public comment. I will ask, there are a lot of folks here, if your comment has essentially been made, and as many of you have prepared comments, and we're not going to cut anybody's time, but if a comment has been made, if you could simply echo that comment and observe that that, you concur with that comment that was made earlier and may speed the process up a little bit. John?
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with that, this is the opportunity for members of the public to provide comment on these proposed changes. Again, if you'll please start by telling us who you are and where you live, and then address your comments to this matter.
I'm Bob Edwards. I live at 107 West Gray Eagle Street here in Nag's Head. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Appreciate all the work that you're doing. I know it's been a very difficult job, and, and it's going to continue to be a very difficult job, I'm afraid. I want to kick this back to where this, this mess all started, and that was with the, with the proposal on workforce housing. Comprehensive plan does not address workforce housing. It remains a major concern. This property that was designated for the workforce housing has been, had been zoned C2 since 1969. And a side, side note to that, it was offered for sale to the town when I was mayor, and maybe we should have bought it, and we wouldn't have this problem that we're talking about this morning. But we had, we had invested in the Doughty Park property and didn't feel like it was a matter that the town should invest in property that we weren't going to use right away. The decision was made because of that to take multifamily dwellings out of the C2 and put it into C1. Now, there's only one problem with C1. There's, there's nothing mapped in Nag's Head that is C1. So, right now, there is, there is no, there is no problem, no place for multifamily housing in Nag's Head. I live in a $16 million building that's 12 years old. It's a noncompliance. I hope it ends up in C1 sooner or later. But that's not this morning's issue. This morning's issue is Caritarius. These are spelled out in the 2015 comprehensive plan. It's a good plan. It was developed while I was mayor, and was approved with a tremendous amount of citizen input to that. input to that. Character areas were new to our planning effort at that time, and it might have been that we were, might have taken that a little bit too far. I don't know. But it was, it was new and it was something that we thought that Nags Head needed, if we were going to keep Nags Head the place that we all love to live. The character areas were not designed to have fences built around them, but were designed to reflect the character of an area that may have some pluses and minuses and some ins and outs. So they were not defined with a specific area around them, but that was the original intent, and I'm not sure how it's migrated to the point that we're talking about this morning. The historic character area is, has been a problem for quite a while. We, back when I was on the planning board, probably 15 years ago, we had tried to get that area designated as a national historic district, and the owners did not want to do that at that time, so that was dropped. The historic area is very important in Nags Head. That's where we basically started, and that's where we've really based all of our building regulations on that character. In my opinion, the present ordinance is too restrictive, and we need to revisit it. Mr. Sanders asked a while ago about the businesses in that area. There are currently 18 businesses. Seven of them are not permitted in the UC5, and 11 would be with special use. So everything there would either be special use or not permitted under new regulations. And I'm not sure that we see those businesses too obnoxious to stay in that area. So that's something we really need to look at. Are we too tight on these regulations? Because if you've got that many businesses there already and all of them are special use or not permitted. Another problem I see is R3 along 168. That's a major problem that has to be addressed. I don't think R3 along 168 is an appropriate use, particularly since it's interspersed with the, with the commercial areas. If you look at the maps, we have a little bit of R3 and a commercial area, and a little bit more of R3 and a commercial area. We need to, we need to look at that and see if we can't make that more consistent. Basically, what I'm asking this morning, let's slow down and make sure we do this thing right. I want to remind you, a lot of you weren't around at this time, but what happened to cottage courts several years ago? There was a problem in South Nags Head, and the board made cottage courts nonconforming, and our cottage courts fell into disrepair. We were almost out of business, and finally, we saw the light and made cottage courts conforming again. I think that's, might be what might happen to some of these businesses if we continue longer than past we are. So I'm asking you, let's slow down. We don't have to approve this ordinance right away. Things under control. Let's make sure we do it right and do it right the first time. I thank you for your time and efforts and all that you're doing to keep Nags Head the place that we love and the place that we want us to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
John, it was a while since we started this, and there was a lot of presentation and comment. Will you reiterate the time limits, please?
Yes, sir. If the, if everyone would please try to keep their remarks within five minutes, please, since we do have quite a few people here. And if you have anything to, if you don't have anything new to add, just please say you repeat or reiterate what someone previously had said. Yes, sir?
Hey, good morning. My name is Basil Bolshes. My wife and I live at 3521 South Monroe Avenue. I didn't expect to see former Mayor Edwards here. I just want to share a quick anecdote. When we bought a house here, we were neighbors with him and Anita. They are Nags Head royalty, for sure. I'm sorry you didn't get to hear that. Thank you for keeping this public hearing on its scheduled date today. I'd also like to thank Kelly White and her staff and the planning board members themselves for the work on this. They put a lot of time and effort into it, so thank you to them. I'd like to provide a couple statistics for you. I've watched or attended every Board of Commissioners and Planning Board meeting since the subject of a low-income housing project came up at the October 5th Board of Commissioners meeting, and I've kept track of all the related comments. At the October 19th public hearing, when the 150-day moratorium, excuse me, was approved, one of the speakers in favor of the project said there was not overwhelming opposition in the room that day. This is when emails were still being read and accepted as part of the public comments. That day, there were 12 public comments in favor of the moratorium and eight against it. Another statistic, started with the October 5th meeting and through the February 21st Planning Board meeting, there have been 41 public comments either against the affordable housing project or for the moratorium, moratorium, or for the proposed rezoning. There have been 16 of the opposing view. So to date, 72% of the public comments were ultimately in favor of the proposed amendments. We have a group of neighbors here today that support the proposed rezoning. Some of them speak, but not all of them. So at this time, we have a large group of folks that have been communicating. I'd like you to stand up, just so we can get a visual. And if you're already standing as part of that crowd, please step forward and raise your hand. Okay. Thank you, everybody. So in closing, I support the proposed rezoning with this combination of R3 and new zoning C5 for the historic character area. Understand there are some amendments that may be coming. It will preserve the look, feel, and nature of the area as described in the 2017 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and I urge the Board of Commissioners to approve the amendments today. This is the third related public hearing in less than 150 days. We've all had plenty of time to review, comment, and or revise the proposal. Thanks for your, let me speak.
Thank you, sir. Next?
I'm John Harris with Kitty Hawk Kites, one of the oldest continuously-run businesses in Nags Head between Danube and Hollowell. We're starting to celebrate our 50th year in March. First, I want to thank the planning board and staff that have put a lot of time into these amendments, trying to come up with a UDO that will work. It's a huge, huge challenge, as we've heard in the comments this morning. If we go back to the Nags Head Comprehensive Plan that's been mentioned numerous times this morning, one of the lines in that plan is the town is committed to sustaining a thriving local business community that supports residents and visitors. The amendments as written do not support a thriving local business community. And these are my counts from the tables that were sent out, and this varies from the counts that were given this morning. But out of 22 businesses between Danube and Hollowell, and I believe there are more than 22 between Danube and Hollowell, but it makes nine of the businesses not permitted and the remaining 13 businesses permitted only by special use permit. A special use permit is an additional level of oversight and governance that businesses outside the district will not have to deal with, so it creates an unfair playing field. If we are trying to support local businesses as Nags Head Comprehensive Plan states, why don't we write amendments supporting those businesses that make them permitted and conforming and not making them jump through more hoops? I ask you to vote against the proposed UDO and zoning map amendments pertaining to the historic character area and the moratorium adopted on October 19th, 2022. These are my reasons. There is no protection of small businesses in the amendments. Now, we heard about an amendment just now, which I had not seen, but that amendment has not been passed, so currently, there is no protection for the existing businesses between Danube and Hollowell. Many are made nonconforming by the amendments so that they, if they have more than 50% storm or fire damage, they could not be rebuilt. So in order to consider amendments into the UDO as proposed, we need to start with an ironclad guarantee that existing businesses can be rebuilt as is, with no strings attached. Number two, second issue is making commercial property between Danube and Hollowell less valuable than commercial property in the rest of the town. And one of the things that does that is the proposed new lot coverage. So reducing lot coverage from 55%, which it currently is, to 40% in the new C5 district. Why would an investor invest in the above district? Most investors would purchase commercial property that they could get more building on and more parking on, so that they can get a return on their investment. This will make the commercial property between Danube and Hollowell worth less than the rest of the town and is in effect downzoning the property. Lot coverage should be the same throughout the town of Nags Head. Number three, conditional use permit. Businesses between Danube and Hollowell will be required to operate under conditional use permits, as we heard about this morning, whereas other businesses in the town will not have that requirement. That will put those businesses at a disadvantage in comparison to other businesses in the town of Nags Head. Again, the rules should be the same for the entire town. And number four, which I didn't address in my letter, but the overlay of square footage is another issue with these amendments. Why not start with the existing square footages of the historic businesses and build the ordinances, the amendments, around those businesses so that they're conforming? And then go from there. There shouldn't be any change to setbacks from the existing ordinances that, again, create a hardship on businesses between Danube and Hollowell. And as I saw on the maps this morning, if, you know, if R3 is being extended to the north of Hollowell, as shown on the map amendment this morning, why shouldn't C5 be extended north to match this, the amended C3 district? There are a number of old businesses in that area, and why shouldn't they fall under the same guidelines or amendments?
Mr. Harris, that's five minutes.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I know everybody's trying really hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Good morning. I'm Sandra Allen. I reside in Southern Shores now, on Deer Path Lane. I am a former resident of Nags Head. I'm married to John Harris, full disclosure. I'm CFO at Kitty Hawk Kites, which, as John said. And as I'll say now, not many people who work at Kitty Hawk Kites have heard me say this often, but I agree with what John has just said. So I'm not, I promise I'm not going to repeat it all to you, and maybe you won't have to cut me off this time. But we have heard some changes today in terms of what we were, came here prepared to speak about now seems to be changing at the last minute. So it's a little hard to know which we are addressing, what we have just been reading in the last few days since we were notified of what was happening, or what we've just heard about. So I guess to jump to the end, I'd like to say that what I really want to ask is that you vote against the proposal that's on the table today. I wouldn't ask you to vote on something that's a little bit tweaked in the last minute, but I understand there are some problems that need to be addressed, and I would hope that you would just send some direction back to the staff and the planning board to try to solve the problems at hand without trying to create other issues for businesses in the town that I don't think were problems that needed to be fixed. It seems like the issue of workforce housing is, I recognize, a huge issue with strong feelings and something people in many parts of not just our community are struggling with to solve. It's a big, big problem, but I don't understand why trying to solve that issue has reached out to change longstanding businesses like Kitty Hawk Kites, where I work. And I'd like to also mention the other smaller businesses at Jockeys Ridge Crossing, which are not included on that list. So there are more businesses than we've seen mentioned. There's more nonconformities that we've talked about. We focused, I think, on use and not structure when answering the question about nonconformities. But at Jockeys Ridge Crossing, we have a business as old as the Fudgery from around 1987, when the connection was built, a longstanding tradition like Kitty Hawk Kites. And then we have a new business, Abby's Tees, you heard mentioned earlier. That's a young lady who grew up on the Outer Banks, came back to work here a while, moved away, and then returned with her husband and opened Abby's Tees and Sudden Light Records, a very, very small community business that, with what's on the table today, if Jockeys Ridge Crossing were to burn or have some other catastrophe and be unable to rebuild, those small businesses that are at Jockeys Ridge Crossing would also be displaced. So I just hope that you will vote against the proposal on the table today and try to solve the problems at hand without downzoning the business of Nags Head. When I read your very well-thought-out comprehensive plan, I see a whole different message about being flexible and maintaining the businesses on the beach road of Nags Head. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Whoops. I'm JW Jackson. I have residence at 3543 South Virginia Dare. Much appreciate the character of Nags Head. My family's owned property both sides in Nags Head from 1939, and I grew up spending my summers here. And I have accommodation when we built our house in 2004. I got accommodation from the city on striving to maintain the character of the housing here. Living on the Hollowell Beach access, I see, you know, I'm very familiar with that area, obviously, but what I didn't understand was why we're going for high-density housing in an area on either side of Hollowell that's currently pretty much the standard Nags Head property. And I'm particularly concerned with that undeveloped area. If that goes, and I don't know what high-density housing is because I've lived in Atlanta and other big cities, and I know what high-density usually means. So we're already very much overutilized at our access. Hollowell is a small access, but it's got a lifeguard. It's well-placed for the houses around it. The people who are across the street from us, you know, back in your area, everybody utilizes that thing, and the city has expanded that parking onto Hollowell, but it's still, during the summer, it's just huge. And so the crossing of 12 and of Crowton, if you, if you allow high density, you're going to get a lot more pedestrian traffic and a lot more traffic to more exacerbate the problem at the beach access, as well as crossing Crowton to get to the Jockeys Ridge Park. So I don't, I didn't understand why that area on both sides of Hollowell were kind of designated as high-density. So... So I would ask you to reconsider that and maintain the character of the existing properties. I guess there's about 15 lots in there that could be developed. On the north side of Hollowell, I thought the developer did a pretty good job of developing that adjacent to Crowton, and I haven't heard any complaints from the folks who have that property. So that's my main concern. I didn't, just didn't understand why that property was designated in that way. And I ask you to reconsider that and maintain kind of the character of that, of that area. That's all I've got to say. I appreciate the time.
Mr. Leidy, I'm going to do something we don't usually do, which is introduce comment in the middle of the public comment, because this issue has come up, and I don't want anybody else here laboring under the same misunderstanding. Our R3 is labeled high-density, unfortunately. Our R3 zoning is single-family on a slightly smaller lot than R2. That's all it is. It's single-family development on a slightly smaller lot, and it is not, it is the highest density of single-family development in the town of Nagshead, but it's not high-density development, just to clarify. So.
He just scared the heck out of me.
All right. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Who would like to comment next?
Hi, my name is Shelley Blackstone, and I have a property in Nagshead, and I'm in the Basil camp. But I don't think anybody, I mean, I think everybody loves the local businesses that are here. I think we all enjoy them. I think that what it is, is that a future 20,000-square-foot building in places that are now zoned for that, we don't need any more of that. And I think that's really, you know, I think that's the general feeling, that we don't want to overdevelop. We don't need more 20,000-square-foot buildings in the area.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Pavlak. My wife and I, Pat, we've owned the house at 3616 South Virginia Dare Trail since 2012. We have been coming down here, we're really newbies compared to a lot of the folks in this room, but we've been coming down here since 1998 with our family. We stayed in Kill Devil Hills, but we really fell in love with Nagshead and the charm that was here. And when it was time for us to buy, we looked at Kitty Hawk, looked at Kill Devil Hills, but we chose to buy here. I do want also to thank you, before I go very far there, I want to thank all the Commissioners and also the Planning Board for all their hard work and effort and professionalism in what they did with this whole project. It's very complex, very complicated, and it's kind of morphed from where it originally started back in September, October, to here. And again, it is impacting a lot of folks, business owners and all. My wife just mentioned to me, she says, "Make sure we say, we also very much appreciate the businesses that are here. We love it. We love the feel and the culture and the overall view of the town." So that's not the part, but it's, again, not having to look to see more buildings that are going to get bigger. As we were coming down yesterday for this meeting, we immediately go to Beach Road as soon as we can get there and just drive on down and feel. And this time, I was like looking, as I was driving through Kitty Hawk and then Kill Devil Hills, and seeing the mega mansions and all these big high-rise motels and everything. And then we hit the Nagshead city limits, and it all kind of like, it just calmed down. It took us back to why we fell in love with this place in the first place and why we want to, you know, continue. And that's why we are, we are, we like the proposal, and we are supporting the proposal of taking the C5 to the C2 to the C5 and the R3. We've had many family gatherings here at our house, and with many sunsets, we get to watch out of our back deck, looking at the sunset over Jockeys Ridge. And we hope this will continue for many years to come. Again, I want to thank you so much for all your efforts and everything.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Have luck.
Good morning. My name is Donna Creep, and I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, whose mission is to advocate for our membership and for real property rights. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning regarding this proposed rezoning from Hollowell Street to Danube Street, as noted by the other speakers and by the staff. This area has been zoned C2 commercial for numerous years. Rezoning properties from a commercial classification to a residential classification impacts the real property rights of the owners of vacant land in this historic district. The proposed downzoning from commercial to residential could negatively affect the values of these vacant properties. Additionally, the proposed new C5 district renders several businesses in the area's nonconforming uses, as has been mentioned by the staff as well as several other speakers. Should these businesses be damaged or destroyed, they could not be rebuilt except in conformity with the new C5 district. Some of these businesses have been here for decades, and some have just been built in the past couple of years. Regardless of their tenures, they all have made significant investments in the town, and the status of nonconforming use impacts their financial viability and their sustainability. There's a big difference between being a nonconforming use and a nonconforming structure. The staff memorandums that have been posted on the webpage and the FAQs indicate that the rezoning is designed to eliminate, is not, is designed to not eliminate uses that are already here, but to influence future development. If that is the goal, then revisions to the proposal to grant these existing businesses specific rights to rebuild should be factored into the revisions. Again, thank you for the comments, and I had obviously written these before Kelly got up here and you guys discussed these amendments, but those are certainly amendments that should be considered. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Creep.
Hi. My name is Vanessa Foreman, and I'm here to read a letter from my son Philip Foreman, who would have been here himself, but if he'd had ample time for this meeting. Dear Mayor, Cahoon, and Commissioners, I hope you are well and enjoying the rest of the relaxation before we get rolling again in what I hope to be another great year for the Outer Banks. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance that is being considered at your March 1 meeting. The amendments are unfair by signing out, signaling out certain properties and businesses. Nagshead has always been a town that welcomes diversity, looks out for everyone, and treats each other the way that we all want to be treated. The proposed amendments downgrade only selected businesses and properties but leaves most unaffected. I know there are at least three of you that will be voting on the proposed changes, who own businesses and commercial property in the town. It would be hypocritical and disturbing that any of you would be willing to cause financial hardship to a select group of fellow businesses and property owners without putting the same restrictions on your own businesses and properties. Sorry. By adopting the proposed amendments, the town of Nagshead will be illegally taking through spot zoning and setting itself up for lawsuits by affected parties. The North Carolina Supreme Court has set precedent that spot zoning businesses and properties is illegal. Not only is the proposed rezoning unfair by singling out a small, select area, it is also unjust. What bothers me the most is the way in which we found out, and our properties were possibly being rezoned. This is a major issue that affects so many livelihoods, and all we received was notice in regular mail. I did not receive my letter until the 25th for a hearing that is on March 1st. That's only three business days and is completely unacceptable. For every property owner, at a minimum, should have received a 90-day notice via certified mail with delivery confirmation. We would have been given the opportunity to understand exactly why Nagshead is trying to rush the rezoning through, why Nagshead is singling out our businesses and properties and giving time to higher legal representations to protect our interests. I hope that the town will choose not to move forward with the proposed zoning at all, but at least I urge you to postpone the hearing for 90 or more days so that we have time to prepare and to be present at the hearing. The town has been thriving for years in businesses. The property values have been booming. It makes zero sense to create new zoning when the existing zoning has been working perfectly. More than, more people have been spending time and money in Nagshead than ever, so there should be no reason to change things now. My Brewthru locations in the affected area is my highest grossing store out of five Outer Banks locations and has been serving Nagshead locals and visitors for over 30 years. I and other businesses in the town just cannot get our heads around the sudden condemnation of businesses and properties that are constantly giving back and have been such a big part of our community for decades. Unfortunately, this looks like the town is listening to a handful of very loud millionaire second homeowners along the historic Cottage Row versus considering the livelihoods and welfare and targeted businesses and property owners and their hundreds of employees. Many of Cottage Row homeowners don't even live full-time or vote in Nagshead, and many of them happily purchased their homes well after the targeted businesses weren't existent under even less strict zoning ordinances. These homes are mostly occupied by tourists who are renting them for a week at a time, and we all know that our tourists do not care about zoning changes. In fact, most rental guests and even many of the homeowners frequent the very businesses that would be downgraded. The proposed rezoning appears to put more of the town's concerns on a handful of Cottage Row owners that visit occasionally versus the concerns and livelihoods of local property and businesses and business owners and employees that actually work and contribute to the town's well-being day in and day out. I thank you for your time and for your service to our community. I hope that you will take a moment and put yourselves in the shoes of us who have been putting our blood, sweat, and tears into our businesses for multiple generations in many cases. We have been trying to do our best for our families, employees, customers, and community. I know and respect each of you and feel in my heart that you will consider the above and put yourselves in our shoes, that you will do the right thing and not move forward with unfair proposed rezoning amendments. In Nagshead, all businesses and property owners should be treated equally. Thank you for your consideration. Very kind regards, Philip Foreman. President, Brewthru.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman.
Good morning, Mayor Cahoon and Commissioners. My name is Susan Callen, and my husband is Charles Callen. We reside at 104 East Hollowell Street, which is directly across from the 4.7-acre parcel which proposed development has captured much attention since last October. And if you will direct, look to the left, that is a drone view of the area that we are talking about. The arrow represents 104 East Hollowell Street. To the right of that is the parcel that originally captured all the attention. We do support the town's proposed rezoning classification, which would affect this site as well as many of the surrounding properties. As for our community's historic character area and the neighborhood's character area, we believe that character preservation has a way of identifying us, connecting us, shaping us, and telling the story of who we are. Character preservation holds an attraction of our history and a sense of community pride. We made a choice to be a part of Nagshead, and with respect, we put our support in you, our local town government, to advocate in the best interest of Nagshead and its people, past, present, and future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callen.
Hello, everyone. My name is Clara Smiley. I like to do this, and then everybody can remember the Smiley, forget the Clara. I'd like to thank all of you, especially Andy and Kelly, for all the work that has gone into this. The moratorium has been a useful tool, I think. It has given all sides a time to be heard, and it's given time for a well-thought-out solution to be reached. I can't imagine the effort that has gone into this process, but I trust the result will be worth it. On January 4th, I spoke to you. I can't match the being here since '39, but we've been coming to the Outer Banks for over 70 years, and so we've seen lots of changes. And we've been homeowners at 3621 South Virginia Dare Trail for over 50 years. We take great pride in this historical character neighborhood, and I know many of you do as well. We support the new zoning proposals. It will preserve the nature of our neighborhood as laid out in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and will maintain what we have enjoyed through four generations. Thank you again, and we all greatly appreciate all the work that's been done.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, attendees. Everybody is here in good faith trying to work out a solution.
Could you give us your name, sir?
I'm sorry. Elliot Catherton. I'm sorry. I own the property that is the elephant in the room. I've been coming to the Outer Banks since I was 10 years old. I have a home in South Nagshead. Back in 2000, that piece of property came up for sale, and I invested in it, a big investment, because I believe in the value of land here. And so for 23 years, I've been paying commercial rate taxes on that property, watching as everything got developed between the highways, and decided, when I retired in 2020, that it was time to sell. So I hired Bobby Harrell to find an appropriate buyer, which he did. Now, along comes affordable housing contract. People get upset about that. They differ. I understand that. Reasonable minds can differ on that stuff. So the contract fell through when the moratorium was imposed, and I spoke to Commissioner Cahoon and said, "What's the future here?" She said, "We're looking at the appropriate commercial uses between the highways to stay in character." Okay, so I wait, and I'm expecting to be included in this new C5. And instead, all of a sudden, I'm downgraded to this R3. This property has been commercial for decades and decades. All the residential property to the north, in Old Nagshead Place, on the beach road to the east, have all bought and built with the commercial property in existence. Indeed, the houses on the beach road, the 17 that line the beach road, bought commercial, built residential on commercial. I think that this is not just, to me, to my property, this isn't just rezoning, this is essentially eminent domain, taking, gutting, eviscerating the value of my property, taking it from the highest possible use to the lowest, and without any compensation for that. I'm asking respectfully that when government officials are going to make decisions that are adversely affecting the property rights of taxpayer citizens, it should only be done for compelling reasons, not notions or subjective preferences. The reasons that I've heard for the proposed rezoning to R3, number one, adjacent residential properties, well, those properties came along much later than the commercial, and indeed the ones on the highway, built on commercial property itself. Hollowell Street clearly is a line of demarcation between the commercial to the south and residential to the north. The historic Cottage Row, those are beautiful homes. We all appreciate them. I love looking at them every time I drive down the beach road, but they start a quarter mile south of my property. There's none in line of sight either direction, and the new 17 houses that were built on the beach road completely obscure any view from the commercial property in that direction. The impact of the Jockeys Ridge Park across the street. My property is 4.6 acres, one of the last remaining large parcels between the highways in Nagshead. And I put this to you. The purpose of all of this is the promotion of the historic character of the area. What is putting 10 new cookie-cutter rental machines with postage-stamped-sized swimming pools with fences around them along the highway? How is that enhancing the historic character of that area? As opposed to employing the new C5 designations As opposed to employing the new C-5 designations that you're working on to create a nestled little village area, if you will, of the retail shops, the ice cream parlor, the coffee shop, all those things that were pointed out as permitted future uses in C-5? That's a much better use of that land than ten more houses. And as importantly, there's no compelling reason to exclude me from C-5. There is, however, excellent reasons to include me. It's the best use of the land for the town and for the neighborhood. I mean, people that live in this area are going to be the ones to use these retail shops, cafes, walk-ups, and so on. And it's a fair balance for me as a twenty-three-year owner of that property.
That's five minutes, Mr. Catherman.
All right. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Rick Arthur, and my wife and I, Barbara, we built a house in Old Nags Head Place in two thousand and nine. And it'd be good to know that I only have two quick comments. One is, we highly support the rezoning on the east side of South Memorial Avenue where we live to R-3, which is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. It's already residential, but it will make it consistent, so we do support that. And also, we are highly supportive of the recommendations by the planning board and the planning staff to rezone according to their plan, everything south of Hollowell in the historic character area to protect integrity and carry it to that area. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur.
How you doing? Frank Kevinelli, 3539 South Memorial. Been coming to Nags Head a lot less maybe than some of you is for about forty years. Been a homeowner for about ten. Previously mentioned, I look to retire here later this year. We're very appreciative of the comprehensive work that, in my judgment, started in 2017, most recently been really revisiting this and trying to refine it over the past six months. We're very sensitive to business needs, and when I say sensitive, the reason we came here was the small-town historic format of the community. The only thing that maybe people should consider, I freak, all I do is come down here, use the restaurants and services. When I live here, that might change. But without people coming down here, you might not have those businesses and services. And I don't know if that gets realized sometimes, because I come here from New Jersey, don't hold that against me, please. I'm looking to come down here. But quite frankly, if it didn't have the climate here, I could go to the Jersey Beaches for the same money and the same thing. But I chose to come down here because of the small community feel. I think you should be careful. I think the intent was to preserve the existing businesses, not to handcuff them or handicap them. And I think a lot of effort was done to accommodate that. And maybe there's a misunderstanding, and maybe with further refinement, you get there. So, thank you. Appreciate the time, and I wish everybody the best. It's a hard time.
Thank you, Mr. Kevinelli.
Oh, Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Jess Harris. I live at 3541 South Memorial, which is almost right at the intersection with Hollowell. It's our home, and very proudly from the guys from the Blue Moon and everyone else, your services and restaurants, as well as all the stuff at Jockeys Ridge, I've got more kites floating around the house now than I can shake a stick at. But we really appreciate the services. I fully support the amendments that are the proffers that we have here on the amendments to the zoning board. But more importantly, I think there's some sincere consideration must go with some of these amendments which are proposed, especially with the small business piece, and that's clearly got to be sorted out afterwards. But the issue dealing with Old Nags Head Place, I think, is a no-brainer. The R-3 area that's to the west, the exact same type of structures with the same conformity, which are on the east side of South Memorial, this is a no-brainer. Why this ought to, this is already a homogeneous area that is clearly fully developed and that ought to flow into being voted as an amendment to R-3. This is a no-brainer. And I think that the whole issue of the vacant lot at the end of Hollowell is it flows into R-1. I appreciate the issues associated with the many years it sat there, but in the end, it's people that have to come here with places to stay, and then they go for services. I mean, there's a balance between those two and the move to residential. As given the change of the Hollowell Street to all being R-3, and then just over on RC-12, it runs into R-1, I think this is a very smooth-flowing framework that allows a character that's easily absorbed. And one of the residents spoke earlier about driving down twelve on how as soon as you popped into the Nags Head area, there's a change. It's the houses, it, there's a, there's a value that just jumps out at you as you make your way down the street. And I think that flow would just be further enforced by that lot being concluded as part of the R-3, where it very clearly would flow with the residential capabilities, single phone, single hand, single-family residence as planned under R-3. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Howdy, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Beaman Hines, and I own Sue's Barbecue and the Crazy Cabinets leases for me. Both these properties are right in the middle of this stuff, and I've had them both for over twenty years, grew up here. I just want to make sure that before this stuff goes forward, that we really look into a little bit deeper, because Bob brought up a bunch of questions already as a business owner here in Nags Head, and, you know, I've been a business owner this whole time, Renee, Ben. It's a matter of, I found out about this when John Harris called me on Saturday, and the mail was sent out just like they said when it was supposed to, but I was out of town and not around at the time, and didn't get it until Monday. So I've only had a few days even look at this. With everything else I've got going on, I really don't have the time to really look at this like I want to. I've talked to, you know, Ben and Kevin, I don't mind saying that, and both have been very helpful on trying to understand what this is as quick as I can figure it out. It's not something that I can dive into and in a day and a half have it figured out where I feel comfortable saying, "Let's go ahead and approve it, not approve it, or move forward with it." I think there's enough questions out there right now that we've got to hold off on this, and let's take some time and go back over it somewhere. Even though it's been a hundred and eighty days or a hundred and fifty days, whatever it was before, I wasn't even really paying attention to it. I reckon I should have been. But I really feel like everybody here just needs to let these guys go through what they need to go through, let the planning board get back on it, or the planning staff. And there are some things that need to be tweaked. There are some things that are really good out there that I can see that I really like, but there are some things that, you know, making my property value go down is one of them. Not being able to build back is what I was thinking was going to happen. I was told differently on that yesterday. But I just need to get into a little bit more, and I hope that everybody understands. I'm not trying to hold anything back from what's right for the town in Nags Head and the citizens and the businesses. I just want to look in this thing, delve in this a little bit more and understand there's a lot of us, got a lot of, you know, a lot of money put in this, a lot of time, and it's just, it's aggravating to me not having this where thirty days before, sixty days or ninety days before, or even certified mail like Phil said. I mean, realistically, I think with something this big, I don't need to get it just in the mail. It needs to be sent to me so I know I've got it. Y'all know that we received it as property owners, business owners, and, you know, taking care of twenty-five employees at one of the businesses, and I don't know what they've got at the other one, but I mean, it's people's lives at stake too, as far as business, you know, being able to work and stuff. All of us are looking for help that are business owners, I can tell you that. But if something happened to that, you know, not being able to rebuild like I wanted to rebuild it is kind of aggravating. But I appreciate y'all's time, appreciate what y'all are doing. I know it's tough, but I just, I wouldn't say just, let's hold up a little bit and take our time with it and a little bit more time with it. I know y'all been dealing with it for a while, but just think and consider all sides, both sides of this, and I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
My name is Eddie Goodrich, and I'm a property owner in the town of Nags Head. After listening to everything today, the changes that were recommended that Kelly came up with, the biggest thing that was concerning everyone it appears was the non-conformities and the inability of property owners of residential, pardon me, of commercial structures that have been so very important to Nags Head, not being able to be rebuilt if they were lost. It appears that you'll get, y'all addressed that, and I think that's one thing everybody was really more concerned about than anything else. I also think that what Mr. Catherman said, that his property being zoned C-5 commercial is a better use of that property than a single-family or multifamily because of its proximity to the state park. And I think looking, that's very important. So the only thing I can say is that probably the most practical thing now is send it back to planning, and I think everybody's heard everything they want to hear now. I hope so anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich.
Hello. My name's Linda Madison. My husband and I have owned property here since nineteen ninety-nine. We live in South Nags Head, and I've seen a lot of changes since we've been coming here all these years and now we live here the last five years. And the sad thing I saw was old, beautiful, like the Carolinian Hotel, just anyhow. What I wanted to say was, I think it's important that, I was surprised to read in the paper that the historic Cottage Row homes do not seem to me to be protected in any way for the future, to be, that was the way I interpreted it, is the reason I came here today. I don't understand about the other, but I just think those homes, we don't have a whole lot left of that period, and I think that it's, they're very worth protecting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners and all support staff. My name is Mike Mishu, and I reside at 3427 South Memorial Avenue with my wife Donna. We have owned property there since 2020, when I came across the bridge literally the day it was opened to make a bid on the house during that pandemic year. We are now full-time residents here in Nags Head. Donna and I have been coming down to Nags Head and bringing our family for over fifteen years, always with an emphasis around Jockeys Ridge Park for its beauty, historic heritage, and everything that continues to impress us in the area. As of September of twenty-two, I am semi-retired after serving over twenty-six years in a small city of forty-five thousand in Northern Virginia, which also has a designated historic area and which is being prepared for their hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary as an incorporated town. I say this as I fully understand the impacts and significant tasks set forth before you and the assistance of the planning board, as well as Town Manager Garman and Planning Director Ms. Wyatt and all the support staff that's gone into this. My wife Donna and I are in favor of rezoning the area, subject to the moratorium to the combination of R-3 and the newly proposed C-5 district. We are in favor of the rezoning proposal, and it is very clear to me that through the strategic planning meetings with local government, that extensive work has gone into the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and subsequently solidifying the historic character area of Nags Head over the past several years. We believe that the spirit of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan should be followed and that this is proper furtherization of this plan and that the integrity should continue. The historic character area is simply not looking at historic Cottage Row or even Cottage Row looking west towards Jockeys Ridge. Jockeys Ridge was literally here before this country was formed and even before the early explorers came. It is now a state and national treasure, which happens to be in our wonderful small town, so it is all up to us to preserve the historical character that we've inherited. This is also about looking from the top of Jockeys Ridge to the east over Cottage Row and everything in between. And I ask you, what would you like to see looking eastward on decisions that are being It is literally the town seal. It is on the flag. It is what Nags Head stands for. And I hope and realize that looking back at this, we can continue to be proud to celebrate this historic character area over the next several generations to come. Thank you all for your time and considerations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mishu.
Good morning. My name is Charles Callen, and my wife Susan and I live at 104 East Hallowell Street, which is right across the street. I thank the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board for the time spent in reviewing the zoning map and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. I can tell you that we could have invested our monies in places other than Nags Head for future retirement. But what attracted us to the Nags Head area was the neighborhood of Old Nags Head Place. It was the most attractive quality of life. We want to be part and be able to settle in a serene neighborhood tested between the roadways. We should be grateful that we had an opportunity through individuals such as Carlista Fletcher Baum and Ed Green for their legacy and desirable environment that could attract future generations to visit and even settle in the Outer Banks area. We value the quality of life that Nags Head and the Outer Banks has to offer, though we may be looked at differently as some of the homeowners because we rent, and we do. We rent three months during the year, and that's it. And we are nevertheless homeowners and a property that we invested in and chose to cast our anchor, so to speak, and we have every right to make our voices heard. One of the attractions that brought us to this community is the local arts group. My entire life has been in the arts in New York City. And we, we came here because we have, we found a vibrancy here in the performing and visual arts, and we want to be part of it. We are in support of the proposed rezoning, however, let us not alter the historic character area, character area, nor make changes that could have a significant impact on the long-term character of the district and surrounding natural environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Callen. Is there anybody else who wishes to provide comment?
Me, too.
Yes, Mr. Harrell.
Good morning. My name is Bobby Harrell. I operate a real estate company here in Nags Head at fifteen-and-a-half mile post. I think most of you that know me know I do appreciate the character and historical significance of Nags Head. We built our office twenty-two years ago. We built it in keeping with that and actually received an award from the town of Nags Head for that, so we do appreciate that. But I would have to say, too, that But I would have to say too that I firmly believe in private property rights. I grew up here in eastern North Carolina, been coming to Nags Head since 1950, first invested in Nags Head in 1985, and have continued to do so. One thing I would say is the broker representing Mr. Cathcartman, they spoke earlier, and based on what the former mayor said, if we'd like to get into discussions again about a town buying this property, we'd be glad to meet with you. I think Elliot would echo that, so anyway. You know, one thing about C2 zoning, and I think most of you on the board are business people and a lot of business people here this morning, we're all struggling with housing and employees because without the housing, you know, we just don't, you know, we're not able to attract employees. You know, the hospital, one of our major employees and needs in the area, you know, they're struggling constantly to keep people here, draw people here because they can't find housing. And a lot of the issues that we're talking about today came up because of Cathcartman track, I'll call it. And there were some misconceptions about that. You know, it, it came out as low-income housing. That was not the case at all. This was affordable and essential. I think essential probably identifies it best, the need for housing for local employees. The hospital alone had a need for 40 people that would fit within the criteria of what Wada Cooper was trying to do on this site. There were only 54 units, so you know, you're talking about probably half of them could have been used by the hospital. I think anyone that operates a business in this area would have someone that would qualify. As far as the, I would have to call it downzoning to R3, when Paul Shaver developed Old Nags Head Place, and I would commend any of you that lived there because it's a beautiful neighborhood, well done, but when Paul Shaver bought the property and developed that, there was a reason he didn't develop this in a single family. It just does not meet the needs of a single family. You've got 1,000 feet of frontage on the bypass, and there's several real estate brokers in here as well. And I think you would agree with me, the hardest sell for any residential property on the whole Outer Banks is trying to sell residential on the bypass. People don't want to live backing up to the bypass. As far as investing in this, you know, Elliot said he bought it 22, 23 years ago. I looked yesterday, his current tax bill is $14,000 a year. I think most of us can do math in our head if you've owned for 20 years what you've invested in taxes alone, and you get to the point that you want to use this property as you retire and not be able to do it. Another thing I would like to address too is that some of these surrounding properties, while I realize their homes, every property that joins this on either side, even the two older properties on the beach road, were built after it was Zoned C2, every property. And many, if not most of these properties are not just summer homes, they're investment properties. One property on Hallowell Street was sold last week on the 24th. It rented for 23 weeks last year. That's an investment property. There were, a pool of sales for the past year in some of the housing surrounding this, rental weeks varied from 16 to 36. Average rental week was 23. Homes are built with amenities, pools, you know, they're investment properties for people that they were using the shoulder season. I'd do the same thing with a home in Ocracote. But to say that it's strictly residential use is really not. I would ask you to postpone the vote. I think Kelly and her staff have done a great job of trying to pull this together and get some consensus, but it's hard to get you armed around what's happening here and the long-term effect. The C2 zoning was done in 1969. What we're talking about doing today is going to carry away in the future. Let's give it some more time, some more study. As I stated, a lot of the people that this impacts are out of town, they're taking that last vacation or doing other things before the season starts. So I, I ask you to give it more time, more study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harold.
It is still morning. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Randy Royal. I own a property at 3420 South Memorial Avenue. I do rent it, but it's not an investment property. It helps me pay the mortgage on the house to purchase a beach home. So I, I kind of disagree with that matter. We are somewhat, I mean, we're part of the community here, even though we don't live here full-time. Also respectfully disagree on the workforce housing. I do agree it's necessary, and let me back up. I'm a civil engineer. I've been doing this for 43 years, been doing land development. I'm a bit torn here with some of my statements, and we'll get to that in a minute. But workforce housing, you absolutely need it here. We need it everywhere, for teachers, policemen, firemen, hospital workers. My understanding of the Wada Cooper was that it was 40% of the median income, which was about $29,000 a year. Most teachers made too much money to qualify for that housing. Huge problem with that going in there. That's gone away though, is my understanding from talking to Kelly, for the text amendment that you cannot do that in C2. I think C2 is going away regardless here on this property, but I'm a little bit torn there too. Mayor Kahoon, I, I do a lot of work up in Virginia Beach for stormwater. Same thing has happened up there in that you can't, you have a maximum on pervious or impervious cover. They have stormwater problems. You have the same problems down here. You're exactly right, it's going to cost more, and we're struggling with the same thing up there. Perhaps though, the town needs to look at it everywhere and not just in this historic district, then it's an even playing field for people that haven't developed their property. As far as the businesses being damaged, I think, I'll throw the press under the bus, I don't think the press has done a good job explaining to folks what's going on. I think Kelly has explained it here today in that they can build back. They're, they're not damaged by that. They can go back with what they had with the nonconforming use, with the nonconforming setbacks, et cetera. So they've kind of got a unique ability in that nobody else can come in if they're a nonconforming use. But that's, that's getting more into the details here. Again, I think Steph has done a great job with that. I hope I don't get my neighbors angry here, but again, I'm, I'm torn. This gentleman has owned this property for 23 years. I bought my house knowing full well there was B2, or B2, C2, it's B2 where I am, commercial property in this area. I think Steph has come up with a good compromise with the C5 zoning, which allows something more of a neighborhood-type use in there, as explained, coffee shops, et cetera, something that we can enjoy, but to allow this man who's been paying taxes on it for 23 years to, to use something reasonable. Do you vote on it today? I'm torn there too. I think, I think the businesses are owed probably a, a town hall type hearing where it is explained to them. They can ask all their questions. They don't read something in the paper and not understand it. I do it all the time. Most people don't understand what we do. We have to simplify it and explain it. It's tough to come to a hearing like this and hear differing opinions, hear things for the first time, even though they were legally notified, and not understand it. I think the businesses deserve that, a chance to hear it a little better, and I, again, hate to say that to my neighbors because I, I drove down here today too for this hearing, but I, I think we need to be fair to the, the businesses. That's where I am on it. Again, I'm torn. I, I want to be fair. I want, I, I would love for nothing to go there, but that's, that's not fair either. The gentleman, the gentleman deserves to do something on that property, and particularly since it's been zoned commercial for a long time, he probably should have that right. I, I like the new zoning, the C5, and, and I think that's more appropriate. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Royal. All right, is there anybody else who wishes to provide comment?
I do.
All right.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Cindy Bright-Bill. I am the sole proprietor of Surfside Plaza Shopping Center. Surfside Plaza Shopping Center was the first strip shopping center that was built on the Outer Banks approximately 53, 55 years ago. I currently have 15 individual specialty businesses in the complex, and I myself have been there trading as Surfside casuals for 48 years. So I'm just asking that the consideration be given to these people that have put their hard-earned money into creating a new business in my complex and are working diligently to make a good living on the Outer Banks. We are unique in a way because of, there aren't a whole lot of those kind of strip malls. There are strip malls, but not with the type of specialty stores that we have. The customers love it, the visitors love it, and we've worked real hard in trying to diversify our businesses there. So I'm asking that please take all of this into consideration for these hard-working tenants, and a lot of things have been answered at this meeting for me in regards to, you know, a roof blown off or a fire, because it is an old building, but in a way I'm historical too. So is John. So maybe, I appreciate the time, and I've enjoyed listening to everything today, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bright-Bill. All right, any further comment?
Good morning. Please excuse my appearance. My name is Courtney Gallup, and for the record, I reside in the town of Nags Head, and I do have a small business in the town of Nags Head. And I've been watching with great concern and, and, and just great distaste, actually, at the progression that we're going in towards the rezoning to C5, to a more restrictive zone, commercial, of the commercial district near Hallowell Street. I'm, I'm very concerned about it. It, it's a bad look. It, it looks like a few property owners are driving the debate. It, it feels rushed. It feels not fully thought out, especially there's several small business people on this board, and to, to, to make a business nonconforming and to present, prevent them from growing or improving or expanding is, is a kiss of death, and it's very anti-American. It's very anti-capitalistic, and I just don't see a justification to go in this direction. So I would, I would join many people and ask that this action be delayed until the, all the concerns of the impacted businesses can be thoroughly assessed, and the, the true motivations of this action should come to light, which, which I, I don't think are, are legitimate. As a small business person, my business was, was, my business in Dare County was threatened with becoming nonconforming, and I, in good conscience, cannot let the same thing happen to some, some of my fellow business people in Nags Head. So I would just ask that this be given much more consideration, much more time, and a much broader look at the implications, and for not only these individual business owners, but to Nags Head's image. Nags Head has, I believe, improved in becoming more business-friendly as, in our reputation. We're going in the right direction, and this just puts us back light years. So please reconsider and delay the decision on the rezoning if, if at all possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gallup.
Good morning, David Bragg, Nags Head. I'm kind of taking a different look at this, going back to the housing issue. I'm, I'm looking around, I don't see, let's see, Rob Ross here or Commissioner Woodard? I believe they came to this board and decided they were going to strong-arm the board and have them stop the Commissioners from looking at this. I would like to remind Commissioner Woodard of Jefferson Wilson Housing in Portsmouth, where he's from, and let him go back and relook at the issues that occurred there. My father-in-law owned the Ace Hardware Store there. It was great for him because business was booming, because they bought all the supplies and equipment from his business. It was terrible for the city of Portsmouth. Soon after the development started, crime increased, businesses closed down. The eventuality was it was plowed under. So next time the Commissioners come and speak to you, I would ask to ask Commissioner Woodard, what happened at Jefferson Wilson in Portsmouth? Thank you for that, if you would do it. I would like to thank the Commissioners for taking that stand and having this occur today. I would also like to say I support the local businesses here. I don't think the intent of what was done was to hurt or harm the business. I do agree that it should be probably better thought out and explained to the local business so they, they're not having issues of fear and thinking they may lose their business. A little bit about the lower-income housing, because if we're looking at $29,000, it's low-income, so let's get that right out of the way. I just returned from Florida, and when I travel, I talk to the restaurant people, the servers, other people in the area that, that don't live in the area. I ask them, do you live here on the island? And most answer is, are, no, we don't, we can't afford to live here. I say, well, how do you get here to work? Oh, like most people get to work, we drive. What a novel thought, drive to work and not have to live exactly where you work. Secondly, I'd like to commend some of the business owners, one being on the board here, and others that offer housing to their employees. What a great idea. You bring somebody on the island, you have a house or an apartment for them to use. That's great. It eliminates us having to build this housing. My last point is, I did hear a couple people say, hey, why don't we buy that piece of parcel of land? Let's do it. I'm sure we could get a good deal on it right now because it, it just got pulled off the market, so let's make an offer. You can't, can't refuse it. We can end this real quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Mr. Harold sitting right over there if you're interested in talking. All right, is there any, any further comment? If not, at this time we will conclude the public comment session. I will ask whether the Commissioners need to receive any other information or clarification or have any further questions for staff before we begin deliberations.
If I may, John, considering that we have been sitting here for 2 hours and 45 minutes, you retain that question until we come back from a 15-minute recess.
How about we retain the answer until we come back from?
Done.
That's fine.
The board will be in recess for 15 minutes. The board has returned from its recess, and Mr. Leidy, you had a question just before air break as to whether any Commissioners, I believe, had questions for staff.
That's correct, yes, sir.
At this point. So I think I'm supposed to start at this end. Commissioner Sears, do you have questions for staff?
I do. Next, Kelly, please. I don't know who referenced this, but how many special uses are outside of the current C5 district or proposed C5 district? How many special uses? Do you know that off the top of your head?
So you're saying uses that are maybe permitted in C2 that are special use?
Yes.
Versus what's in, I don't have an exact number, but there's a significant number of uses within the C2 that are special use that are not even permitted, proposed to be permitted in the C5, but I don't have a number for you.
And do you, how many of the current businesses in the current C2 are currently possibly nonconforming for any reason?
Again, I don't have a number, but I, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm sure there are a significant number of existing businesses in the C2 that have site nonconformities, whether it's parking, lot coverage, overage, something of that nature.
I wasn't trying to call you out. I really wasn't.
I get it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cahoon? Mr. Kahun.
Um, I think I'm still gonna say my comments, 'cause I don't really have any questions. Well, yes, I do have a question for Kelly. Of the things that you presented today as possibilities, rebuilding, those type of things, how many of those would require a new public hearing?
So, the town attorney could correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, of the things that we are considering, if, if that amendment is less stringent than what the planning board made their recommendation on, it does not have to go back to the planning board, it could be acted upon today. So, I think the only, I think everything can be acted on today unless perhaps you are interested in, in changing up the zoning designations of specific properties. And I would defer to, to Attorney Leidy on that one. But in terms of the text amendments to the UDO, I think all of those could, could be done today without having to go back to the planning board.
And one other question, just for clarification. In the chart that you presented that gave everybody square footage, you corrected the, uh, Agshead Cafe parcel property?
I did, yes.
So it is compliant, not, non-compliant, under the new, under the proposed new zoning?
Correct. It, that would be a, a tweak that we would want to make, just for clarity, to make sure that it's, um, the thirty-five square foot of habitable pertains to the, essentially the, the use when there's an accessory dwelling associated with it.
The only comment, I'll say my comments.
Um, there was a proposed amendment to the ordinance in order to preserve the non-conformities and allow them to build back. And I'm not recalling how that was written, but depending on where that goes in the ordinance, if that applied town-wide as opposed to C5, you know, then you, then you would ha, essentially, essentially, you know, you're, you're trying to eliminate non-conformities, is why you have that language in the ordinance. So, uh, in this case, we're trying to, we're looking at a class of non-conformities that people may be interested in preserving. So would, is there a way for that language to apply in a district as opposed to town-wide? And then, is that a legal question as to whether we can do that in a district?
That specific question may be better for John Leidy, but I would say my thought process on that was, the non-conforming use language, it, as it's proposed, it would be town-wide and my thought process there was, the non-conforming use language as it currently exists, in my opinion, is, is in place when it comes to some of the more egregious non-conforming uses. Um, and we've had some of those in town. I mean, if you were to think about a go-kart track in the middle of a residential district, um, that's a, that's a non-conforming use that, that you would wanna keep that standard in place for. There really are no egregious non-conforming uses in the town and-
Okay.
To my knowledge, the only one that I'm aware of, because it comes up pretty often, is the H&R Block building that's nestled in a residential district.
Right.
So that's, that's the only one that I'm aware of. But again, since there are no existing egregious non-conforming uses-
You can input that.
I went ahead and wrote it with the intent that it would apply town-wide.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and John, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you some questions. These are gonna come up at, at some point, but, but, um, one, would you address the question of proper notice for this public hearing?
Yes, the, uh, the, the notice requirements for both the text amendments and the zoning ma, uh, map amendment, or the rezoning, uh, have been met. Uh, there's, they're prescribed by statute and with regard to the, uh, notices that must be given for the rezoning, the town is required to give no less than ten days and no more than twenty-five days' notice. So that you've complied with those notice requirements, including the, uh, the way in which notice was mailed out to all the property owners in the area and adjacent to the area and the posting of the notices in various areas, uh, along the property to be rezoned.
Okay, all right, thank you. The other question that came up and I, and I believe there was a reference to it this morning, is the issue of spot zoning, and I know that you've looked at this as well. So will you speak to the spot zoning question?
Yes, uh, we don't consider this, we don't think there's any valid basis for this to be considered spot zoning, uh, for a variety of reasons, but one of which is, probably the most important of which is that spot zoning generally applies to land that is owned by one owner. And land that is owned by multiple owners or that involves multiple lots, um, generally would not be characterized as spot zoning. So, looking at both the entire area or any of these individual pockets, they are all properties that are owned by multiple owners. And so for that reason alone, I think that this would not be considered spot zoning.
Okay. Um, and, and the final question for right now, um, for, for you is, if the board were to determine that it would like more time on this issue, can the moratorium be extended?
I, there's a provision in the general statutes that allows for the extension of a moratorium, but in order to do so, the board would have to make the same original findings that were made, as well as additional findings, that there are new facts and new conditions, uh, that warrant the extension of the moratorium. And I'm not aware of any new facts or new conditions that would support that finding.
Okay, I just wanna get that out there for the, for the benefit of everybody.
Yes, sir.
To Mr. Brinkley.
Kelly, if it, if it was the consensus of the board to look at adopting those amendments and we postponed any action today, could those amendments be added in time for a mid-month meeting?
Um, for your March fifteenth meeting?
If we have one, correct.
Yes, yeah, I, I could probably leave this and give me thirty, forty minutes and I could have, have it back to you before the end of this meeting.
Yeah.
If it could be done by mid-month, and again, that's just me personally asking that, not knowing what the consensus of the board is.
Sure, sure. I, I mean, whether you're, whether you are technically able to do it or not, I personally would not be comfortable reviewing new language and acting on it before I'd been able to give it consideration and read it in the context of the complete ordinance. Commissioner Kahun, you have another question?
Um, it's just a clarification of Commissioner Brinkley's question, and he was talking about the amendments. If we were to make any changes in the map, that would require a new public hearing, correct?
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley, anything else?
No.
Commissioner Sanders.
In the C5, you talked about, um, high-intensity use next to residential. What would that, what would the, well, how would that change the setbacks? It would be more, but what, exactly?
Um, so we have a list of what we consider high-intensity uses, things like shopping centers, group developments, things of that nature. If that were to be, um, cited, um, adjacent to a residential, if it's, if it's adjacent to a residential structure on it, within a commercial zoning district, a ten-foot wide buffer with two rows of plantings will be required. However, if it's a, um, high-intensity use adjacent to a residential structure in a residential zoning district, it's gonna be a twenty-five-foot wide buffer, the three rows of plantings. So, uh-
The high-intensity use wouldn't be a coffee shop or ice cream shop or?
No. It's, it's more of the larger, more intense uses, high-traffic, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. John, I think we've been through those questions.
All right, so no other questions for Ms., Ms. Wyatt? At this time, I think you can conclude the public hearing and begin your deliberations on the various proposed amendments that have been presented.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Um, we can, I think we should just start with discussion, because I'm not sure that anybody's ready to, uh, put a motion on the table for the purpose of discussion. So, um, you know, we've heard quite a bit from the public hearing this morning. Commissioners have, um, suggested by their questions and staff by their offering of various amendments, that there may need to be modifications to the, um, to the ordinance that was published. And so, um, I think what we probably need to do is go, uh, commissioner by commissioner, express our concerns and preferences and then, um, see if, um, at the end of that discussion, we can bring that into some sort of coherent, uh, motion. And I'm due to start on Commissioner Sanders' end of the table this time, I think.
I mean, I think all, we've heard all the concerns from everybody that has spoken and the amendments that we've all looked at, and I think we need to pretty much get those amendments in place before we can move forward. Um, I mean, I like what the planning staff has done, I like what the planning board has done. I mean, there's a reason we live in Agshead, there's a reason we love it, the historic character, but I certainly don't wanna penalize any businesses to try to preserve the historic character, so. And I think it's pretty clear that that's our intent, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley.
I want to start by thanking each one of y'all for taking the time out of your day to come speak to us. Those that emailed us that couldn't be here, those that I've spoken to on the telephone. It's been a, uh, it's, it's, it's helped me understand the questions and concerns that each of y'all have expressed, either personally, uh, to me on the telephone, whether we, it was at the meeting today or through emails. Uh, also, the planning board and planning staff has done an extreme amount of work in a very short period of time. We can say a hundred and fifty days, but you throw in New Year's, Thanksgiving and Christmas in there, their days get a lot shorter and they've done a great deal of work. Kelly and her staff should be commended for that. The concerns that have been expressed about the businesses, we, we need to support the businesses of this, in this area. John Harris is, and Kitty Hawk Kites has been a staple in Agshead, you know, a very, very long time. Ms. Brightbill in Surfside Plaza, a very long time, and we need to put protections in place, uh, to look after them.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm torn about property along 158 being residential. I, I have a personal philosophy that I think that's where your commercial businesses go, um, which takes me back to the owner of the Hollowell Street parcel and the fact that it's been zoned commercial for so many years and if it's appraised at a higher value as a commercial property versus residential, he's been paying more taxes on that all this, all this time. And that's, that's a, a big, big concern. I do appreciate Kelly coming up with the amendments. Um, I, I support those amendments as presented, um, and there may be others that want to come forward. Uh, but again, thank y'all for talking, for coming today and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. I, I would echo those thanks today. There were twenty-five of y'all, by my count, who spoke this morning on this topic. Um, and that input is exactly why public hearings exist and it's been helpful to hear from all of you this morning. Um, you know, for the most part, use is not the thing that we get complaints about. Um, and, and what we have in front of us concentrates on, on uses. What we hear about is a border, intensity of use issues, excessive lighting, overflow parking, excessive noise, outdoor display, tree cutting. For the most part, in my recollection, um, use was not a big topic of discussion during the development of the land use plan. It was about building scale, building placement, a lot of talk about how we want the building to look, which is a product of scale and, and building, not, not use in particular. And speakers said this morning that they, that they appreciate the businesses, it was not about the uses. And we have tools to deal with those intensity of development issues. We have buffers, lot coverage, lighting limits, signage limits. Uh, again, the ordinance is, has focused on use. And I think elimination of longstanding uses where property owners have reasonably expected to, them to remain in place, because those uses have not been a problem, um, is a, is a really draconian step and really ought to be our last resort to resolve problems. Even within the proposed ordinance, C5 is described as accommodating neighborhood scale, commercial and residential development patterns to protect the surrounding commercial areas. It speaks much more to scale, pedestrian orientation, character, view sheds than it does to use, other than the use table. Um, all that said, I personally would prefer an ordinance which leaves the existing uses in place, uh, which again, have not been problematic, um, and in the most limited way, to rectify the valid concerns focuses on the intensity of development concerns. Regarding building size, development intensity, and to the extent that they must be, that we must discuss use, the ordinance already draws some distinctions appropriately between 158, a five-lane thoroughfare, and NC-12, a two-lane street. Fronting 158 should be the most intensely-developed commercial uses. As Commissioner Brinkley said, that's not the place for residential. I mean, so if not fronting 158, where is a convenience store with gas supposed to go? Where's a indoor public assembly space supposed to go? Where's a shopping center supposed to go? Where town houses, if you want them, supposed to go? Um, and I realize, um, that there will still be C2 between the highways north and south of the area we're discussing, but we are discussing the middle-third of the town. I would prefer an ordinance and a map which permit those most intense uses to remain along 158. Uh, that includes extending C5 along 158 up to Hollowell Street, the property that Commissioner Brinkley referenced. Those are my thoughts, thank you. Commissioner Kahun?
Thank you. I will start by thanking planning staff and the planning board for having so many meetings and working pretty much in a really quick timeframe to bring us something back. I would also point out, for those of you that are here today, this is the first time this board has met as a body to discuss these proposals and look at them in tandem and talk back and forth. I would also like to thank the people that came out. But as I've looked at this proposal, it's, um, taken me back. I've been around a long time, in some cases, probably too long, but, um, the whole reason I got involved in the town back in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-one, was this exact issue. Um, there was a proposal to, um, downzone the oceanfront in my neighborhood and, uh, that created a lot of heartburn for me, so I ended up running for the board and getting elected, much to a lot of people's sorrow, I'm sure. But, um, as I look at this, I support a lot of what staff and the planning board has done. Um, they've tried to accommodate and work with it a lot. What I cannot support is, um, taking away somebody's commercial property. I think R3 is a perfect designation for Onaxhead Place and the Beach Road where it's developed as residential property. And then you go further, it went into C5. I was happy to see some work by staff to talk about keeping those uses. I have no desire to make a business non-conforming. I know what it's like to, to deal with that. It's not as easy to deal with non-conforming properties as everybody thinks, so, um, it's really hard. It's one of the things your bank asks you when you go to apply for a loan, is your property non-conforming? And it makes a difference. Bob understands that. And we all, we've managed to work within the parameters that the town has given us and, uh, hopefully we'll work for a lot, longer few years. But I would like to see staff bring forward those, um, items that would keep those businesses there. If they're conforming now, I don't wanna see them made non-conforming. Um, if they're there, such as some of the uses aren't allowed perhaps, but still want you to stay, John. Uh, yeah, it's not my desire to make it harder for you to do your, do your business, or you send either one.
Thank you.
Um, 'cause, um, I know Cindy's use right now is permitted. I would hate to see it become non-permitted, as well as any of the other small businesses as well. And I consider all these businesses, small businesses. Um, they're not a big box store, which Agshead has worked very hard to limit. That's why we adopted a twenty-thousand-square-foot size limit, even after we got some big box So, I would like to see us move forward, um, but I do want to, um, not get into a box by, um, not being able to extend the moratorium, but I would like to see something brought back. Um, I believe our moratorium expires by our mid-month meeting in March, I believe.
That's correct. March seventeenth.
I respectfully disagree with the attorney about extensions. That I think we have. This board has learned new facts, even from the proposal about what we're doing, that we had not in the days until this meeting, and we got our packet last week, that, um, some of the different things that were coming about with the C5, how far it extended, what the different uses would be, so, to me, those are substantial changes. the different uses would be, so to me, those are substantial changes. Maybe they're not. John's made that opinion, but it wouldn't hurt my feelings to extend the moratorium for another 30 days. But I would like to have staff bring us something back, as Kelly described this morning. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in favor, I'll tell you right now, of the Hollowell Street property that fronts 158 that's not developed as residential becoming a C5. I think that's the most fair proposal that I've seen for that particular designation from Beach Road to bypass, R3 on the Beach Road, and C5 on the bypass. I think commercial, small business, commercial. I think small business mixed use is a viable, viable use. I think people that build small businesses and then residential on the top to either live in or house their employees, is a good use for the town in Nagshead. It gives you space to have employees as well as have a business. I think that's, rather than being repetitive, I think that's my comments, Mayor.
Thank you.
The hard part is, it's always repetitive when you're the last one. So I want to thank, I want to thank the staff, the planning board, the community for being involved in this, especially those who have been involved from the very beginning. It's a lot of work and a lot of time, a lot of thought. Yesterday, I think I recorded 11 hours on the phone over this topic alone, so it's been exhausting. And I have to agree with a little bit of what everybody said as far as, all the way up and down the line. It is not easy, and definitely as a business owner as well, don't want to see the businesses restricted from anything that they're doing, but you also have to look at, at the growth as we move forward. Most of us in this room won't be here in 35 years. Hate to say that, even Mr. Shields back there, probably one of the youngest ones here, won't be here in 35 years. But the truth of the matter is, we have to look at what's best for the community overall, keeping the businesses here, keeping that separation. I think Commissioner Brinkley may have mentioned, or Sanders may have mentioned, that we got to go farther apart to have that residential and commercial being. And if we went back to the 60s, the 70s, the 80s, when some of these other folks were here, we probably wouldn't be talking about the same topic of workforce housing. We'd have put that in the place at a much better level where somebody that made more than $15 an hour could actually live in it. So there's a lot to be seen yet with what you've mentioned with these amendments, and I'd like to see that come back at the mid-month meeting before I make a final decision. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Kelly, could I get you to come back, please? And so, since we are talking about, it sounds like the direction from the board, and this remains to be seen, but it sounds as if the direction from the board is going to be to incorporate the amendments, address the language, either, either reinsert existing uses that would have been nonconforming as permitted uses, or create language to allow them to remain, one or the other, and we'll figure that out in a few minutes. But it sounds like we're interested in incorporating the amendments that you presented toward the beginning of the meeting, and I think it's important that we see those again before, because they, they need to be part of a motion, if that's where we go, to direct this to staff to incorporate these. And so, can we get those back up so that we can run through them quickly?
Absolutely. I may have a motion to make that was scheduled for a public hearing, or send them back to the planning board. If that's okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I pulled it up for you, and we can, I don't know if you just want to start from the top and work down.
Well, we, we discussed map amendments. I think we're gonna circle back to that in, in a little bit. The, the lock coverage, I would guess if we're gonna send this back to the board, what is the board's thinking on the lock coverage issue? And let's not do that right now. So, so lock, lock coverage, the question of do we remain with the originally recommended 40%, 50% with permeable paving, or do we change those numbers? Do we add these uses back to the C5 district? And those that are listed there are retail shopping center, if you can scroll down, group development, mixed-use development, commercial with accessory residential. And I think those are all the ones Commissioner Cahoon just listed, actually, which is pretty darn good. Permitting the proposed uses within the C5 district as currently permitted, and so that would mean that those uses that are not, that were cited as nonconforming would not be nonconforming if they were added back. So that would be shopping center, convenience store.
Gas station?
Yeah, with, with fueling and-
Convenience store with gas station, I think was-
Yeah, yeah, and, and maybe, maybe a couple of others, but essentially those that were... No, I'm sorry, there were only two. That's right. We did that at the beginning. There were two. That was the shopping center, the two shopping centers, and the two gas states, gas stations slash convenience stores.
Yes.
Uh, no, John, I'm sorry. Scroll on down, see if there was anything, is there anything else? If we put those uses back so that they are no longer nonconforming, do we need this language about nonconforming uses of structures?
Don't we already have that? Well, aren't you proposing to do that? Don't we already look at that townwide anyway?
Well, the, the terminology in red, those last two paragraphs were going to be new to accommodate any nonconforming uses that we created, but it sounds like we may be leaning towards not creating any nonconforming uses.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we probably would not need that additional language in red.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Keep scrolling, Kelly. That it?
That, that was it. And then I just don't, don't forget to wrap in at some point the conversation of, do we keep things permitted via permitted by right versus special use consistent with the C2, or do something different?
Right, okay. And, and that ordinance additionally. Okay. So we're talking about the ordinance that we had, with those modifications, and I think the most debatable question is the map amendment. Do we modify that parcel to make that C5? I heard three who expressed interest in that, but, you know, we can, we can talk further about that. So Commissioner Cahoon, you said you had a suggestion.
I do. I have a couple of questions. One is, when does the planning, the planning board meet? It's the third Tuesday?
They do, so that's going to be the 21st of March.
Okay, all right, thank you. But I would, I guess I'd like to finish the conversation. John, I have a question for you as I move forward. I support everything, hang on a second, I support everything that Kelly has shown up there. I think the only question I have is the lock coverage, and I'll work with the rest of the board, but I do support all the other things that she had set up there. And then I'll wait till we give direction to say the other thing.
Okay. All right.
He's coming, John. My question's probably for John, as it comes up.
John, you may have had further thought about this, the moratorium.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that would constitute, go ahead, I'm sorry, yes, Commissioner Cahoon?
I think that one question that I just consulted with the attorney about may preclude the issue of the moratorium, is that one of the things, the elephant in the room, perhaps, we've taken some other actions that preclude multifamily housing.
Correct.
So the expiration of the moratorium would not impact that at all.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And I, you know, I, as I've thought about this over the last several days, I've kind of wondered why we felt hung to the, you know, bound to the more expiration of the moratorium for action, because the thing that got everybody excited from the beginning is not on the table. And so, you know, you don't seem to be at real high risk to go 30 days when you're not gonna get a multifamily project anyway.
And we don't allow them.
And we don't, and we don't allow them, so it's not part of the, it's not part of the question. So if the moratorium expires, it's potentially less harm than it would have been otherwise.
I would say, just, just to be fair, that there were other commercial development pressures that also weighed in favor of adopting the moratorium.
Yes.
And I think a lot of those are being addressed by these proposed amendments.
Right, yes. So I'll ask, is there anybody who's willing to take a stab at crafting a motion?
May I make another change?
Yes, sir.
May I request, for the board's pleasure, if I make another change or request a change, can we change STRs from permitted use to special use in C5?
What's that? Short-term rentals?
Short-term rentals from permitted use.
To special use in C5. There's five houses in C5 that are currently there, you can make them special uses.
Would we be eliminating them otherwise?
If we, I don't know. Would be, if you took it from special use to permitted use, would you be eliminating five houses that are in that C5 district as rental property?
I don't think so. I'd have to ask Kelly that question.
Well, I guess, any current short-term rentals? Let me stop. I understand that our registration program is not currently in place, but for those who have previously registered their short-term rental, if we're aware of that, if we have their registration and we know that it is being operated within the C5 district, if you were to make the change from permitted to special use, essentially those that are already there could continue, but any new requests to operate short-term rental would have to come before the planning board and Board of Commissioners.
And was that your tip?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, cool with that.
Well, if you owned a short-term rental and we made this change, that seems like a substantive change that you would want to be aware of before the town adopts an ordinance.
She just doesn't, it doesn't affect any of them. They're all grandfathered in. That's what she just said.
Well, they would become nonconforming.
All right. We'll let that slide.
Something that should go back to the planning board.
Yeah.
Well, I can have that prepared for their March 21st.
You can always add that. Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so we could, thinking of the way that we do this today, we could incorporate that, subject to planning board approval.
Don't even incorporate it in it. We'll bring it up as advisement to, to the planning board.
So now we need to do today is send back what we agreed to.
Yes, I think that's correct. Yeah, yeah. So, do you want to try that?
I make a motion that we ask staff to bring back at our March meeting, the changes that were incorporated up on Kelly's screen with the deletion of, I believe, the last red line paragraph, to work with those definitions that were in the white paper that you presented about conforming versus nonconforming, permitted versus nonpermitted uses, and bring us back for consideration at our March 15th meeting.
Okay. And what about a map change?
I'll address that in a minute.
Okay, all right. So that's, that is the motion, then, is to incorporate these changes as the commissioner described into the ordinance. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
I'm gonna have another second motion after this one that will deal with the map. Mine just has to do with-
Mine's gonna do with the map.
And mine's up there on the, what she has. Is the information about this not requiring the special use permit included in her presentation?
My thought was that we were, we could just go back and amend it so that any use that we had currently said that it was a special use permit, we would make it consistent with the C2. So there are-
Just so nothing changes with them being required to jump through more hoops, just keep it the way it was.
Correct. If it were permitted in the C2, it will then be permitted in the C5. If it were special use in the C2, we'll keep it as a special use in the C5.
And that's part of her motion, correct?
That was my motion, as the planning director presented.
Okay, right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, or in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
Indulge me?
Yes.
John, if we take a look at the map and we decide to extend the boundaries of that map, is that considered spot zoning? Extending the map, one way or another, is that?
Extending the boundaries?
The boundaries of the maps that we see.
Of the areas that are being rezoned?
Yes.
That would not necessarily be spot zoning.
Okay.
If it was one property, would it be considered spot zoning?
Possible.
Or it could be considered-
Could possibly be considered spot zoning, if it was one property. Property owned by one, regardless of size, property owned by one owner, there would be the likelihood of that being spot zoning.
Okay. I can still make the motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we send back to the planning board, the map, and ask them to relook at their designations as they presented to us. In particular, and I'm gonna identify Hollowell Street to go perhaps from R3 to C5, and get their input back on that after they have a chance to debate it and look at it.
Okay, second.
Motion, second.
For discussion purposes.
Mr. Sears.
Will you add to that with the inclusion of John to research whether or not that is spot zoning?
Yes.
I still second.
Well, I understand you second, but I just want to make sure, because I don't want to vote on anything that would-
That's why I sent it back to the planning board to take a look at it and give us back their recommendation.
Right.
And that was my question about the high-intensity use as to the buffer zones against the residential, so as to protect some of the people in the old Nagshead place and what the buffers would be, and if we could keep some of that existing vegetation, or it would just depend on the use that goes in there.
The way the ordinance is currently written, it would depend on the use. The commercial transitional protective yard would only apply to a high-intensity use, but even if it's not a high-intensity use, there's some other commercial requirements. There's some vegeta, you either preserve 10% of your vegetation or plant 15%. There's buffer requirements where there's parking adjacent to rights of ways, so there's other opportunities to require landscape buffering. Should it not be a, one of those intense uses?
Uh-huh.
So I don't, I don't know if you would like for us to consider revisions with regard to that as well.
I might want to look at some language for that to protect that.
Planning board can bring back, look at that and bring back.
Okay. So the commercial transitional protective yard, high-impact use, okay.
And I would also encourage people that were interested to come to the planning board and express their views as well, whether it be the owner of the property or anybody else.
You don't think any of that changed the motion?
That wasn't a motion, that wasn't a motion, that was my discussion.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. Now-
I have one more comment, sorry.
Yes, sure. No, and then I have a question.
As we look at the maps that were presented today, I know that several property owners came to the town and asked to have their property rezoned to R3. Nothing precludes any other owner from coming and talking to staff about other rezonings as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we need, should, in the case of whether there would be a map amendment, do we need a public hearing at the March meeting?
The planning board won't have heard it by then. It would have to be-
It'll be, I'm sorry.
May meeting, April.
April meeting.
April meeting, I'm sorry. That's, that's correct, because this is March. I'm sorry, I'm still thinking I'm in February, it's March. So it would be the April 1st meeting, or the first meeting in April.
If you're gonna consider any other- If you're going to consider any other zoning...
Should we go ahead and schedule a public hearing, or...
I... Can you schedule that at the 15, you can have it in a minute.
What I was going to suggest is that we, I mean, I think this is the effect of what you're doing, but I think it's appropriate to announce that you're going to table any action on any of these proposed amendments until that meeting, the mid-month meeting, the March 15 meeting. I just think we need to make that clear for the public, that there will be no actions taken today or later today on those items, but with regard to taking any further action on the zoning map, I think that may have to go back and redo the whole notice process once we've heard the planning board, once the planning board has considered it.
Okay, all right. All right, so there's no need to preemptively try to schedule any hearings? Okay. All right, thank you. I believe that brings us to the end of that item.
With that said, I would just say this, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to reopen the public hearing and just announce that the board has tabled any action on the various proposed amendments until the March 15 meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, John.
Is that the right date, March 15?
March 15 for what we do total every day.
Today's March 1, it'll be two weeks from today.
Yes.
That's right. It's March 15.
All right.
And then we can conclude the public hearing again.
Okay, all right. And with the conclusion of the public hearing, it being 12:44, the board will take a lunch recess at this point. Thank you.